Good morning, everyone. This is the Board of Commissioners virtual meeting here on Rockdale Channel 23 and all of our social media platforms. And both Commissioner Washington Post One and Commissioner Williams Post Two are joining us this morning along with excellent staff. We have Chief Cave, our Chief of Staff, and we have our Executive Director of Legislative Affairs and County Clerk Jennifer Rutledge on board with us this morning along with our Department of Public Relations Director Joe Gumm. And I believe the county attorney is chiming in this morning as well. Is that right, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I've just received notification from the county attorney. He'll be, he'll be on the meeting in one minute. He had technical difficulties.
That's fine. Thank you so much, Chief, for that update. It's, it's 10:02 and it's time to start our meeting. We're calling our meeting to order. According to what I have in front of me, Executive Director Rutledge, there are no special recognitions this morning. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, very good. Right into Commissioners, we'll move right into Agenda Review at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will start with Item 2022-70. This is with United Maintenance Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for the courthouse chiller replacement. It's change order number one. The contract 2021-179 is to replace four additional small HVAC units at an additional cost of $135,670.90, and it's for two months, and this is using ARPA funds. Item 71 is with Sunbelt Builders Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is for the animal shelter expansion. It's to close out change order number one to contract 2021-72. It's an additional services resulting from unknown deteriorated HVAC duct work. It's an additional $9,516, and it's out of the 2017 Splat Recreation Fund. Item 72 is with Pro Fence LLC through the General Services Department. This is for on-call fencing. It's change order number one to contract 2021-45, and it's an increase in unit prices and to renew the contract term through March 23rd, 2023. Item 73 is with Envisage Technologies LLC, also known as Guardian Tracking. This is through the Sheriff's Office, and it's a cloud-based employee performance management software application. It's $9,464 for year one, then $7,010 annually. The term is January 1st, 2022 through January 1st, 2023. Item 74 is with Crown Castle. This is through the EMA Department for the Smyrna Road Tower. It's change order number 21 to contract 2007-46. This is for the permission to allow equipment modification on the tower by Verizon. It's at no cost, and it's a single install of equipment. Item 75 is with Geotab USA Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is for fleet tracking software subscription in the amount of $4,928.51. The term is March 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2023. Item 76 is with Restoration Storehouse Center and Association Incorporated and Community Development Institute, the Head Start. This is through the Finance Department, and this is the First Amendment to sublease. This is change order number one to contract 2019-34. This is for the expansion of the premises. It's an additional $483.33 per month for 46 months.
So, could you tell us what that means, the expansion of services? I, I tried reading through all of this, and I didn't get through all the legal lease.
Director Sanders, are you there?
So, this is really the Head Start. If you have legal questions about some of the contracts, we can check with our attorney when they log on or through their attorney through Restoration Storehouse.
Well, really, I just wondered what it meant, the expansion.
Director Lewis?
What's expanding?
So, what's expanding? This is Director Lewis. What's expanding is just a Head Start program and the space that they're taking in this, the facility that we lease out to Restoration Storehouse. So, Head Start is now taking over more space in the facility, and that's just going to add an additional 43. They're subleasing that space, so that's what's occurring.
So, so we're approving their increase that they're paying to Restoration Storehouse?
Correct, because they're subleasing it from Restoration Storehouse. That is correct.
Okay. All right. That's, I couldn't decipher all that. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Director Lewis, and thank you, Commissioner Williams. All right, next item, please.
Sounds good. Item 77 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Nature Kim Incorporated. This is for easement clearing as, on an as-needed basis for access to sewer lines and the force mains. This is $100,000 estimated cost for 2022. It's a unit price contract, contract 2019-161. Item 78 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department. This is for online utility exchange. It's for the use of online utility exchange for positive IDs and collections in an amount not to exceed $22,000. This is unit price contract 2013-46. Item 79 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Open Hand Atlanta. This is for home-delivered meals for 2022 in the amount of $75,925.85. This is a unit price contract 2021-99.
So, just to be clear, this is for our senior citizens, the Meals on Wheels or something similar to that, correct?
Yes, ma'am. It is Meals on Wheels.
Okay. And I just wanted to, because we did, we extended those services early on, I think, a few years ago. Is that correct?
So, it's under contract. We actually approved the contract last year. This is just the yearly drawdown for the actual meals for this year.
I just want, this is another place that I wanted to show taxpayers where, where their money goes while we're, you know, we're, we, this is $75,000 that we're paying so that we can make sure that our seniors are well-fed and nourished.
Isn't it? It's almost 17,000 meals.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, that's a lot of looking out, 17,000 meals, Commissioner Washington. I'm, I'm glad, glad you raised that point, and thank you, Executive Director Sanders, for clearing that up. But you're absolutely right. For a number of years, that has been our focus, relate to the seniors and our community here. And certainly during this, this pandemic, as Commissioner Washington was alluding to, made sure that there has been no senior who's been made aware of that has been left behind. And I, I really, that's one of the things that I think all three of us share that we're certainly proud of, that we have made sure that although the seniors' center has been closed, services have not stopped. The field services has not stopped, and we've made, we've made sure that we've taken care of what, what the folks at the church like to call the sick and the shut-in.
Or just the shut-in.
Yeah.
But also, I'd like to acknowledge that some, sometimes these are some of these people's only meals that they get that day. And so, we're definitely taking care of a need, and that's a very well-used, almost $76,000. That's all.
Absolutely. Executive Director Rutledge, next item, please.
All right. Item 80 is an expenditure request for NAFCO through the Fire and Rescue Department. This is for 11 sets of turnout gear for December 2021 in the amount of $22,262.90. Item 81 is an expenditure request through Tyler Technologies Incorporated for the Superior Clerk of Courts. This is an annual maintenance and support for all divisions using Odyssey in the amount of $53,560. Item 82 is a request for surplus of equipment from the Sheriff's Office and from the Code Enforcement Division in Planning and Development. Item 83 is with Water Resources. This is for the temporary rights of entry for the Almond Branch Sewer Upsizing at CSX project. Item 84 is through the Water Resources Department with Home South Development. This is for the public dedication of the water and sewer for Brookstone Lakes Phase Two. Item 85 is with Microsoft Corporations through the Technology Services Department. This is for the Unified Enterprise Support Services in the amount of $64,412.50. The term is February 15th, 2022 through February 14th, 2023. Item 86 is a resolution authorizing the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County to provide the State Court of Rockdale County with an alternate facility outside the county courthouse to conduct judicial sessions.
I think that one needs some conversation.
All right. Take it away, Commissioner.
So, um, we, you know, we've been talking about the additional State Court judge coming for a couple of years, and where are we going to put them, and where are they going to house, have their services, their, their, you know, conduct their business? And so, now, we, this resolution will allow the court, this Judge Reed, our new Superior State Court Judge, or, I'm sorry, our, our new State Court Judge, to use JP Carr as a, a, a place to have, to conduct his business. The la, if I read everything right, is the last two weeks of every month will be dedicated to, to, for that purpose. And that, this has all been worked out through the Sheriff's Office and Communications and everybody that needs to be involved. I, you know, I, I, I hope this is a temporary situation.
Well, let me say, it's a better situation than what's going on now with them standing outside of the courthouse, giving out legal paperwork to people that are, are waiting to come in. So, hats off to everybody that was involved in coming up with a solution, and we do know that we have more work to do for this, but it's, it's definitely, we're in a better place, not an optimal place, but a better place than we were before he came. So, thank you for everybody that was involved, and we're, I think, I'm sure they're still working on a permanent solution.
Well, the good news is, we're moving forward, and the three of us, along with everybody that occupies the current courthouse and the judicial center across the street agrees that beyond the original date of 1939, that we're certainly in need of a brand-new judicial complex. I'm excited that this board has made the decision to really take a hard look at that and begin to move forward. You're absolutely right, Commissioner Williams. We are out of space, and as the county grows, schools continue to grow, and the school system is thinking about building more schools. That means we have to hire more deputies, more firefighters, and provide more space in order to cater to the needs of the citizens in our community. And that includes everything from a judicial standpoint, because as we know, as the community continues to grow, things in the criminal justice system will grow as well. So, uh, but I think that we're taking a, a very good, positive step forward, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, to make sure that later down the road, the citizens of Rockdale County will have the facility, meaning the space, to operate for years to come, and the folks won't look back at us and figure out, were we in a coma, or something like that. Executive Director Sanders, was there any comment you wanted to share on this subject that Commissioner Williams has brought up concerning our judicial complex?
No, just that we are working closely with Judge Reed to make sure that he has everything he needs for the temporary space at JP Carr.
Absolutely. And I have to commend Judge Reed for his positive attitude, always positive, always accommodating, always willing to work with us and find a way. He, he doesn't act like a movie star set in a trailer that has to have pink lemonade. So, we do appreciate him understanding where we are as a board and working with the situation as we progress forward, and we're going to continue to do that, too, make sure that we meet the needs of serving the citizens as he tried to conduct court on behalf of all of the citizens of Rockdale County that comes through the State Court that he's presiding over here in Rockdale County.
I think that's all of the judges, because from what I understand, they're all allowing him to share the courtroom when he's not in session. So, I think that they are definitely trying to work out the solution over there to, and the district attorney who's prosecuting, and everybody's trying to accommodate our lack of space, so.
You're absolutely right. Executive Director Rutledge, next item, please.
So, we are on to public comment, and it's my understanding we have no one signed up to speak today, so it's board comment.
All right, I'm moving right on to board comments. We'll start off with.
I don't know what to do, Chairman.
Commissioner Washington, absolutely.
This is, it's two weeks, two weeks in a row. Um, first, of course, it's African-American History Month. It's the first day of February, so I'm going to read my, my first tribute to, contribution to African-American history, and that is to pay homage to the legendary Carter G. Woodson. His vision of a Negro History Week, which years later developed into Black History Month, was created to highlight and celebrate those in which mainstream media would never discuss. The accomplishments of African-American and contribution to America is unmatched, but often untold. Today, I would like to thank the Miseducation of the Negro. If you have never read that, that is a must-read for everybody, and thank him for his brilliance. Um, so that's my contribution to African-American History Month. I think I have one more this month, and it, next week it'll be a doozy. That's really all I have today.
All right, all right. You're amazing. You are amazing, Commissioner Washington. Commissioner Williams, take it away.
Um, I think Commissioner Washington read my mind, because I was also looking at Black History Month and Woodson, who I had not heard of before, initiated it, but I wanted to talk about why he designated the second week of February as Negro History Week before, of course, it became the whole, the month, but it originally was called Negro History Week. Which he, and the idea was not to place limitations, but really to focus everybody on the broader contribution and to get that into the nation's consciousness. So, uh, the, um, the reason that the second week in February was picked was because it was the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And of course, Abraham Lincoln was the one who signed the Emancipation Proclamation, and Frederick Douglass was a strong advocate and proponent for the black rights and freeing of the slaves. And so, that's why the second week was chosen. And then, 50 years later, after the first celebration, there was President Gerald R. Ford, who officially recognized Black History Month, and he did that during the country's 1976 bicentennial. He called upon Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of the endeavor throughout our history. And then, um, later, President Obama, which was 40 years after Ford, um, who had formally turned it from a week into a month, Barack Obama delivered a message of his own from the White House, and he said, "Black History Month shouldn't be treated as though it is somehow separate from our collective American history, or somehow just boiled down to a compilation of greatest hits from the March on Washington or from some of our sports heroes. It's about the lived, shared experience of all African-Americans, high and low, famous and obscure, and how those experiences have shaped and challenged and ultimately strengthened America." So, um, just as I learned a couple new things this morning, I wanted to share that with, with the others, with our citizens. I don't really have anything else to, well, I have one other thing to say. And that is that a bill has been introduced that will support mental health initiatives in, in the state, and, uh, uh, I forget his title, David Ralston. Is he a representative, a senator?
He's the Speaker.
Yes, ma'am. Speaker of the House, House Bill 1013.
Yeah, Speaker of the House has introduced that bill, um, which those of us involved with mental health have been following very closely. Those are my comments.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. I, I'm going to yield all of my comments this morning in just a second to the Public Relations Department, and, and I always remember that February is, is, is a twofold month. You're absolutely right. It's Black History Month, but you know, it's Valentine's Day on the 14th, and it's, it's, it's Black History and Love all month long here in Rockdale County.
You know, you know, we started out with me not appreciating Valentine's, and we're still in the same spot, six years, six Valentine's later.
Life, life gets better, Commissioner Washington. Just hang in there. Keep hope alive. But I want to say a big thank you to the Community Relations Manager, Melissa Mims, and to our Public Relations Director, Director Joe Gumm, and his entire team. They have worked very closely with Ms. Lee here in the office of the chairman. As this year, Commissioner, you know, since 2017, this board has been bold in recognizing a black history all throughout Rockdale County since we've come together as a board, if you all remember, starting back in 2017. This year is no different. They've done a fantastic job. This docu-series that you're going to witness each one of these virtual board meetings, but it doesn't stop there. On February the 22nd through February the 24th at the Rockdale Auditorium, if you have never experienced the black church experience, you are going to be in for a treat each one of those evenings. We've reached out to clergy all over Rockdale County and a little bit beyond to help share and depict what the black church experienced. What we didn't do, we didn't get into Baptists, Methodists, and all the different denominations. We just collectively pulled them together to kind of express and explain, but what an experience. Director Joe Gumm, I'm yielding to you, share with you, share with them the first episode of this docu-series.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. And by the way, we see that you're getting prepared for Valentine's Day with that pink tie. You're looking sharp this morning, Chairman.
It's actually red. It's actually red.
Oh, well, it looks pink on video, so.
Okay.
But that's okay. Yeah, you, you always look sharp. Well, yeah, thank you, Chairman, for that introduction. We obviously, with the, according to the, the Board of Commissioners Office, we wanted to join together here in the PR and Marketing Department and put together something that acknowledges Black History Month and highlights, like you said, the black church experience. So, the first part of this series is dropping right now. It'll air on Rockdale 3 as well as on all of our social media platforms. It's called "The History of the Black Church." The second part will air next week on February 8th, and that is devoted to devotion and the concept of that, and praise and worship. And then, of course, the third part of the docu-series will run on February 15th, "The Role of Ushers in the Black Church." And as you mentioned as well, it will follow up on February the 22nd through the 24th with a rockin' good time at the Rockdale Auditorium at 7:00 with local ministers and praise and worship teams coming together. So, if we're ready to roll on the first part of the docu-series, "The History of the Black Church."
Most of the church histories start with something like people gathered in small groups in a brush arbor, so somewhere in a clearing in the woods, kind of, they would have worship. And out of that, they eventually built buildings.
The African-American church has served as the oldest, strongest, and most influential institution in the black community for many, many years. Families, businesses, schools, colleges, universities have been birthed out of the black church.
They assembled a list of 37 men, freed blacks and freed slaves, who would make up the first prospective class of what later became Morehouse College.
We are a part of a faith that is a Judeo-Christian faith, and a part of the Jewish-Christian heritage is the emancipation from slavery of the children of Israel, and the children of Israel are mandated by scripture to remember where they came from. When we see our story being told, we take just as much pride in being delivered from American slavery as the Jewish people do from being liberated from Egyptian slavery.
God has a way of allowing his people to be tested, allowing his people to go into captivity, and in the case of Israel and the Babylon, God declares that he did it himself because of their disobedience. But in the end, he promises that you're going to be better on the end than you were in the beginning.
We were taught the scriptures. We were taught how to raise hymns. We were taught devotion. We were taught service and give back.
From ages zero to 18, church was our life. I have four brothers. Church was our life. Not only were you going to church, but you were going to participate in the worship experience.
Every Sunday was an event. Every Sunday was, because the people took it so seriously. The ushers would wear their uniforms, the choir would be robed up, and a lot of times they wouldn't just take the choir stand, they would march in, march in singing, and start of the service. Oftentimes, you had what was called devotional services.
We praised God for at least a solid hour, hour and 15 minutes or so, and after that, you know, all you had to do was just let the folk begin to tell what the Lord did while they were praising Him.
I think about Bishop T. D. Jakes. I also think about Reverend C.L. Franklin. I think about Dr. King. There are so many, countless numbers of contributors to the black church and to the black pulpit. The institution of the black church lives and lies within each and every person's soul and spirit.
The churches go back to the end of the Civil War. Churches were kind of a place where you could be free to be, because about six days of the week, you might be subject to all kinds of insults and various kinds of abuses. In that church world, you could be somebody.
If their spirits were downtrodden, their spirits could be uplifted. The services were very energetic. You know, they would sing the praise and worship songs, the devotion songs, and they would get excited. They would. You know, they would sing the praise and worship songs, the devotion songs, and they would get excited, they would clap, they would run, they would shout, dance, all of that. They could have gone through hell and high water from Monday through Saturday, but when they went to church on Sundays, their spirits were revived, and to hear an electrifying message, a message of hope, a message of encouragement, a message of faith, a message of prosperity, they could leave out on ten, came in on zero, but going out on ten, feeling they could conquer the world.
Thank you to Director Gumm, uh, and his entire staff, thank you to, uh, Melissa Mims and Community Relations. But let me just tell you this, uh, Commissioners, it just gets better, uh, this is episode number one, and I would encourage you to make it your business, uh, to be present, uh, if not all three of those evenings. One of those evenings, you're gonna be in for a delight, now, there is a running joke in the black community, uh, and, and that joke, Commissioner Washington, has been going on for years and years, uh, Commissioner Williams. Black folk stay in church all day long, and, 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 back in the day, we used to do that. Uh, it has changed a little bit, but we are some church-going people, and it is so much a part of our history and heritage. I think they've done a fantastic job, uh, capturing that and depicting it in this docu-series. That, you hear me talk about it all the time, there's over three hundred churches here in Rockdale County. Over half of those churches are African-American churches, so we've had a chance to incorporate several, several. We weren't able to get all of them, but several of the local black pastors throughout Rockdale County, you're gonna see again next week with this, uh, the next episode of this docu-series, but on February the twenty-second through February the twenty-fourth, this county is in for a treat with some amazing, uh, celebrations, uh, as we depict the real black church experience, so I just wanted to, uh, point out a few things that, uh, I'm, I'm excited about this presentation by Community Relations and Public Relations, working together, uh, to represent, uh, the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County during this particular Black History Month, absolutely. Uh, Chief Kate, in, any announcements from you at this time?
I'm sorry, no announcements from, from my office this morning.
Alright, uh, any announcements coming from you, Executive Director Relish?
I wanna mention one thing, we will have a board meeting next Tuesday, the eighth at ten AM, but the board meetings that are scheduled for the fifteenth and the twenty-second of February have been canceled. We will have the zoning public hearing on the twenty-fourth.
Outstanding, outstanding, uh, while I have you here and you unmuted, Executive Director Relish, is there any need for, uh, uh, executive session, uh, by the board?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for tuning in to another virtual edition of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, uh, public meeting. We appreciate you tuning in, uh, this, uh, meeting will continue to run on Channel twenty-three until next week. Thank you so much, uh, if all minds are clear, as they say in the black church, this meeting is adjourned.